I'd like to call this October board meeting to order and we'll have prayer and then we'll do the pledge. Let's pray. Father, thank you for this day, God. Thank you for this school. God, I thank you for your hand upon us, God, that you protected us through the storm. And God, I just pray that you'll be with us now as we continue to clean up and continue to get back to normal. God, I pray that you will give us wisdom tonight, God, that we would make the best decision for this school. And God, for the teachers and the students, God, help us to do the right thing and to, God, I just ask that you would guide us and direct us in everything that we do. Now bless this night in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have our consent items, which is our agenda, and some policies for deletion and policies for revision. Have any questions about any of the consent items? If not, I'll accept the motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Madison, second by Mr. Mongrill, all in favor? Thank you. We have no public participation and our next item will be Ms. Antonakis.
We're very fortunate here in Lincoln County and honored to have Ms. Beth Antonakis here with us tonight. Ms. Antonakis was selected to represent the Lincoln County School District as a member of the Georgia Department of Education Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council. Ms. An- could you stand, please?
(laughing)
I'm sorry. Ms. Antonakis is a mother of two current Lincoln County students, Lali, an eighth grader at Lincoln County Middle, Sims, a freshman at Lincoln County High, and Jack, a Lincoln County High School graduate and current student at the University of Georgia. Ms. Antonakis has a proven track record of collaboration and community engagement, particularly within the education sector. She has served on all school advisory board levels, demonstrating her commitment to supporting our students and families. In addition to her school involvement, Ms. Antonakis has actively worked to build partnerships between schools, families, and community. She has tirelessly secured resources for school dances, clubs, and teacher appreciation events, showcasing her dedication to creating a supportive and thriving educational environment. Members of the council will meet three times this year with State School Superintendent Richard Woods to discuss education issues in Georgia, with a primary focus on increasing parent and family engagement to ensure student success, as well as to provide input on new policies, projects, and materials that impact students and their families. Members will then bring back the information learned, serving as advisors and ambassadors in their respective communities. Now, that's what was on the paper. But I know Ms. Antonakis. We've worked together for years, go way back even from my days at Augusta Tech. And so I am thrilled and excited for her and this opportunity to go to Atlanta and to meet with people from all across the state and as she works with them and she will be able to explain and talk about rural districts. Because sometimes we don't get in the ear of our legislators, get in the ear of our policymakers, and let them know what's going on here in education in rural districts. She is knowledgeable, she's active in our community, and she's supportive of the school system. So we're very proud to have you serve on this committee as a Lincoln County resident. So let's give her a round of applause. Any words from you?
No, we had our first meeting on the 26th, I think. So I went to Atlanta and I met the superintendent. It was more of an informative meeting. It was right after the Barrow County issue, so they talked a lot about school safety, but it was more informative than anything else. And I'll go back in January for an onsite meeting and then in April it'll be virtual. So, but I met a lot, met a lot of really good people. And I'm just looking forward to representing us. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth, for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
The next item is Ms. Saldana.
Donalaya from cheerleading.
Yeah, she just takes. She's on the way.
Okay, we'll just move on to catcher later.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the assessment results with Dr. Cunningham.
All right. Okay. Good evening. I'm here to present the 23-24 assessment results for Lincoln County. These scores are going to include our Georgia Milestones Assessment, our Advanced Placement, which are AP scores, and our End of Pathway, which are the EOPA scores. We are including the EOPA because they are part of our CTAE program. And whether we're including this to highlight the full spectrum of student achievement. So whether students are going on to post-secondary education or if they're going to go on to the workforce, Dr. Gummey, as well as this leadership and the district as a whole, we value both pathways. So we felt that it was needed to be included. So the first one that we're going to go through are the Georgia Milestones. And I know, Ms. Daniel, you had a little one take with Georgia Milestones this past spring. All students across the state of Georgia in grades three through eight take them in the content areas of ELA, math, science, and social studies. At the high school level, they take them in American Lit, biology, US history, and algebra. It's a really big event. We pep it up. We had our kids get in bed early. We want them to do the best that they can. And all students take it across the state. So the thing that I'm going to go through and highlight for you, you're going to see a chart, and I know you saw it in your board packet. It's going to have a lot of numbers on it, and there's going to be a lot of green on it. What we're going to focus on, or the metric that I'm going to focus on, is proficiency. So basically, we're going to be talking about the number of students that pass the assessment. So when I say proficiency, I'm talking about the pass rate with it. So on the next slide, we're going to look at it from two different standpoints. The first one is going to be how we compare to the state. Everybody always wants to know how we benchmark against others. So what you have on here are different numbers. And the positive numbers demonstrate that we are above the state average by that amount. The negative, of course, means that we are below the state average. If you look at fifth grade, fifth grade says plus 15. This year, fifth grade had an 87% pass rate, which is huge. That is tremendous for fifth grade. So the state had a 72% pass rate. So that's where I got that plus 15 for. So all the numbers that are in double digits are highlighted in a bright green, just to show that they are significant. And then the other ones that are positive are in a lighter shade of green. So going across with fifth grade, one thing that I definitely want to commend fifth grade and Dr. Goldman on is that all of these content areas, we were above the state average, significantly in math and in reading, and then slightly with ELA and science. If you go down by the rows, you look at seventh grade, across the board, we're above the state average. And then eighth grade, eighth grade's tested in all the content areas, which is why you see more of the fields on there. Look at math and science, 25 points higher than the state average. That is tremendous. And that is a highlight that you're going to hear over and over as we go through these results. Now, if you go down and you look at the EOC in the high school, science, which is the biology EOC, we're 15 points above the state. And then also for US history and social studies, we're 15 points against the state, which I think those are things that we should definitely be proud of. If you look at it by the column, if you go down through reading and ELA, you see that overall there's a lot more green than there is white. But I think your eyes probably going to go to the math with the bright green. In grades five through eight, we are significantly above the state average. And definitely want to highlight eighth grade, 25 points above. And then with the EOC, those are eighth grade students who are taking algebra in eighth grade. They are 48 points above the state average. So eighth grade, and I think Miss Tankersley is here tonight, too. That is something to definitely be very, very proud of. All right, the next perspective that I want to look at is grades. One thing that Dr. Gummey has said is he came in and he challenged us, and he said, okay, we're going to be number one in the state. All right, that's just, that's it. We're going to be a Title I school of excellence, and we're not going to worry about other people. We want to compare ourselves to ourselves. So for this slide, I included our growth. I looked at where our averages were for proficiency in 2022, and then I compared them with 2024. So again, if you look at fifth grade, there's plus 11. Again, this year, our average for proficiency was 87%. Two years ago, or three years ago, in 2022, fifth grade scored 76%. So we are 11 points above on that, just to give you an idea. So this is comparing apples to apples. If you go down and you look at eighth grade again, eighth grade is another highlight. Across the board, we have grown over the past three years. And so this is something that we definitely, again, need to be very proud of. If you go down to the high school for ELA, which is American Lit, we definitely have grown over the past three years, as well as with math, science again, and social studies. Overall, if you look at the content areas, reading and ELA, we definitely have more green there. Reading at the third grade level, that's a zero because we're still at a high percentage of 70. We just have not grown in the past three years. Places that we see a lot of white are with math. So math, from three to sixth grade, we have decreased in our growth, but those are things that our administrations are aware of, and they're things that are in the school improvement plan that they're working towards with it. All right. These next slides I've included because we're going to post this for the public on the website. And this really just takes each content and it compares the metric of growth proficiency versus what state proficiency is, so that you have a side-by-side viewpoint of it. Again, if you go down and you look at fifth grade for reading, they've grown and they're considerably above the state. You look at seventh and eighth grade, they are definitely above the state, as is fourth grade. You know, there is some fluctuation with third, sixth grade. And then American Lit, there is an opportunity for improvement there with the decrease in growth and the slight comparison with the state being just one percentage point below it. All right, with ELA, again, you don't see as many bright green on this, but there is a lot of positivity here with it. Eighth grade again has shown a lot of growth. So it's third and fifth grade, four and six in American Lit, they are growing, but they're below the state. And then seventh grade does have a slight decrease, but we are still trending above the state comparison. Math, as we talked about earlier, we're definitely higher than the state, but yet our growth is not consistent with that. So eighth grade again is significantly strong. Seventh grade is showing growth, and they are outperforming the state, but there is decreases in fifth and sixth grade in the growth. As far as grades three and four, we're not showing as much growth as we have been, and we are below the state. So again, this is something that Dr. Goldman's aware of, and they are making adjustments through their MTSS process and other things that they're doing with their school leadership team. Science, science is a very good story there. Fifth grade has shown a decrease in growth, but overall, if you look at eighth grade and biology, we're growing and we are higher than the state. And then social studies, social studies is just positive across the board. We're in the double digits. Eighth grade again needs to be commended for it. And then US history, knocked it out of the park. They're significant with their numbers for it as well. So in summary, I've said this over and over, eighth grade, they're definitely a highlight. Overall, reading and ELA is showing growth, and there are improvements in many grades. There are some areas that we can focus on for improvement, but we are aware of those. Math, we are exceeding the state, but there is a decrease in our growth. So we do need to make some adjustments with that. And finally, biology and US history are doing strong. So we're very proud of that. Now, Dr. Gummey definitely said, we want to compare ourselves to ourselves. You know, we want to be the best, so we don't need to look at others. But I know that everybody always wants to know, well, how do we compare? So we did go ahead and include this slide in here. And this is just the ranking. How do we compare against the 11 other districts that are in the CSRA? And if you look, the ones that are highlighted in green show that we compare first. And again, those tend to fall in eighth grade as far as ELA, science, and math, as well as sixth grade math, and then US history at the high school level. So we are very proud of those content areas. But one thing that we definitely want you to understand is that all of the knowledge is cumulative. So even though we have a lot of areas that are trending upward, that doesn't just start with that grade. It starts with the grade levels below that. So everybody does their part and they'll learn theirs. All right. So Advanced Placement. Advanced Placement takes place across the nation at the same time, same date, for different content areas. Mr. Guttson, your daughter took one this past year, so there's probably a lot of stress that's involved with these because there's a lot of rigor with it. This past year, I know that the high school was named as one of AP Challenge Schools for the state of Georgia, and that's definitely a commendation that we are very proud of. If you go down and you look at our pass rates, and then I compared them to the national pass rate, the highlights are Calculus AP. Calculus is a very rigorous AP course. We only had two students take it, but those two students that took it scored a five, which is the highest score that you can get on an AP exam. So I dug a little deeper. 21% of the nation only gets above. So our two students that did it got that five. So I think that Ms. Hockes at the high school definitely needs to be very, very proud of that. Going down, if you look at English Lit, we had two students take it. They also had 100% pass rate for it, so we were very pleased with that. Pre-Calculus, all five of our students that took pre-calc, and again, this is a rigorous course, they passed. And Ms. Penland's here tonight, and we are very proud of your hard work in helping these students achieve this. And we also had our kids score. We only had one kid for psychology and US government, as well as computer science, take those. Computer science is very rigorous. That student unfortunately did not pass, but the psychology and the government, they did pass with it. There are many benefits to taking AP. One of the main ones is that it can decrease tuition if you score high enough on these tests. And so we're glad that we're able to offset costs with that. And it also prepares our students for college, helping them build those skills that are needed to be successful. All right. End of Pathway assessments, again, we included this because we definitely value what CTAE does for our student body. And Dr. Gummey has a holistic approach to education, so we felt that it was important to include this. There was one student that took the Ag Systems Tech II class, which is really around mechanics associated with agriculture, and they passed. So they were able to get the certification. And we had the welding, the cert safe, and then our CNA program. They all were able to get students that were passing. There's a lot of benefits for this. This tends to make you more hirable, so you have that certification. It also gives you the skill set for it, so it lets potential employers know, our students, they passed. So we've done a very good job with it, and you can hire them hopefully. Okay? All right. As far as our pathway completers of CTAE, you're in the pathway, you're taking three classes. And last year, and Ms. Aitken shared this with me, 50 of the 88 seniors completed one or more CTAE pathways. So that is a very high percentage of our seniors doing that. 48 of our underclassmen completed the pathway. So right now, if we have 48 underclassmen passing, we're on track to exceed that in the coming years. So there's a lot of growth or potential for growth with it. One area for improvement are the number of our seniors participating over a baseline. We definitely want to increase that because it gives them skill practice with the pathway that they're in. Of course, I'm including this more so for any audience that may be looking at it on the web. There's definitely limitations to any data, and y'all know that. Data can say a lot of things. Small sample sizes can definitely skew data towards positive or negative ways. Three years of data is really not an ideal number. You want to have anywhere from five to 10, but due to COVID, we're not going to include that, just because that would not be a fair comparison. And then there's a lot of context that's missing from it. You don't know things like the curriculum bit has changed, the difficulty, the teachers change grade levels. You don't know students for our knowledge, and the personal experiences aren't considered. And then finally, pass rates alone do not tell the entire story. So for our EOPA and our AP, I would encourage us to explore a little deeper and look at how many of our kids were placed in jobs, how many of our kids were accepted to college. And then finally, student satisfaction. And this is kind of like just going off on a little tangent here, but historically across the nation, we use assessments to grade our schools. We'll say, oh, this is a great school system because they have high assessment rates. Lincoln County definitely has that. You've seen a lot of green with it. But Lincoln County is so much more than just the assessments. And you know, y'all sit and talk as bored as I've watched in the past about how people come here for our schools. They do come here for the strong academics, but they also come here because we value things like curricula. We value arts. We value sports. And we also value relationships. Our students are not just numbers. They are faces, they are families. They are, we know the whole background. We built those relationships. And if anything this past week, we've definitely learned that. As I've talked to a lot of teachers, they've reached out and said, oh, well, I talked with this student. I talked with this student. Their house was good, and they have power. Even when we weren't in school, they're reaching out and they are making sure that our babies are taken care of. And mine personally had two of her teachers reach out to her and just ask how she was. And so as a parent, that means so much to me. So pass rates don't tell the whole story. We have a lot of good academics going on. And I'm saying this for the public so that they can hear it. We've also got so much more than that. So I'd just be remiss if I didn't include that. Okay? That is all that I have for that. Now, we want to recognize some of our high achievers on our assessments. We had a large number of students that did score very high on these assessments. And Dr. Gummey has a certificate that he's going to come down and present to them. And our first one that we have is Mr. Sean Changeline. He had a perfect score on the eighth grade math Georgia Milestones Assessment. And if you'll hold right there, I'm going to ask that Ms. Tankersley come up here, too, if she does not mind, because she played a very big part in this, because she was his teacher.
(inaudible)
All right. And then our next student, just stay right there, is Branson Thompson. He actually scored perfect as well on the eighth grade math course. If you'll come up. All right. Ms. Elizabeth McKenzie scored a five, which is as high as you can get on the pre-Calculus AP exam. So we definitely want to And I'd like to get Ms. Penland up here as well. The last two have already graduated and they're at school and unable to be with us. But Heidi Turner, he was one of our perfect scores of five on the Calculus AP test. Again, 21% of the nation does that, so that's something to be proud of. And then Piper Wheeler, she scored a five on Calculus and Biology. We're very proud of her.
Thank you for your presentation, and thank you all very much for the hard work. All right, next, we will move to Ms. Elizabeth Arthur. She is named the Georgia State Pre-K Teacher of the Year.
All right. Each year in March, the Department of Early Care and Learning, which is DECAL, and Bright from the Start opened applications for Georgia Pre-K Teacher of the Year. Pre-K site and program directors encouraged their qualified and successful pre-k teachers to submit applications. As such, Dr. Goldman encouraged Ms. Arthur to submit her application, and Ms. Arthur agreed. In mid-April, a state pre-k representative emailed Dr. Goldman to let her know that Ms. Arthur was selected as one of three finalists for the Teacher of the Year for Public Schools. There are also three finalists for pre-k private schools. At the beginning of May, a team from Georgia Pre-K, including our pre-k specialist Monica Natale, planned a surprise visit to Ms. Arthur at LCES to announce her as one of the finalists. Her family and school family celebrated with her on this day. At the beginning of September, Ms. Arthur was observed using the Class Observation System by a Teacher of the Year judge sent from the state. She also participated in a virtual interview and completed a video recording of her teaching, which was submitted as her finalist application. About a week later, Dr. Goldman was contacted with good news. Ms. Arthur was selected as the Teacher of the Year for Public Schools. The next celebration was planned for October the 1st, but Hurricane Helene had other plans. So today, October the 8th, Ms. Arthur was surprised again with family, school family, Dr. Gummey, Cunningham, and Mr. Williams, friends, state representatives, and announced as Georgia's Pre-K Teacher of the Year for Public Schools. She will serve this school year as a representative throughout the whole state. She will have monthly opportunities to represent the state pre-k teachers, including recording a podcast, attending state meetings and conferences, as well as a national conference, taking over the state's pre-k social media and more. We are so proud of all of Ms. Arthur's accomplishments, as well as the contributions of the entire LCES pre-k program. We know that she will represent Lincoln County and pre-k well. Ms. Arthur, well deserved.
And looking around this room, everybody on this board has done something to help Lincoln and Pre-K. And looking out here and seeing Miss Singleton, Dr. Goldman, I just can't thank all of you enough for all of your continued support in letting me step out and go a little different for Lincoln and Pre-K. I really do appreciate all that you did for us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and congratulations again as well. Our next item will be our financials.
Financials for tonight are August. Again, for revenues, we're not collecting any local property taxes, so those numbers are low. Our intangibles and real estate transfer taxes are caught up this year. Our TAPT taxes on par with our goal. Our local number is high, and that's due to some of the interest we just collected on our CDs in August. TVE is on par. Our Medicaid would have just started in August is the reason it's low, and we have not touched any get-back date yet. Our expenses obviously are a little high with the beginning of the year costs. I know we had, in our general admin, we paid our workers' comp out of that. In support services, we pay our YOS fee. In our MNO, we pay our annual property insurance in July. So those numbers would be high. All in all, for the year, I mean, it's the standards for the month of August, we are, you know, we have more expenses than revenue, but we are fine until, you know, December, when we start collecting property taxes. You can see there, we're a little over a million under right now, but I think last year this time, we were right around 900K under. So it's just standard. Swaths is still high. You see, we collected 96K in September for the month of August. That's just something to keep an eye on later in the year. And we just made our interest payments on the bond, on the school bond. One was 45K, and the other was 270 something. And we wrapped roughly at 277. So we have roughly 1.5 still in bond and swash accounts total. So we're well ahead of where we're supposed to be. Now, I brought our capital projects back this month. I did move 50K at the end of the year, as y'all requested. So we're sitting at 103,000 in capital projects. The other two are still on there, just to show that they were zeroed out. If y'all have any ideas moving forward there, that's something that we can discuss. Yeah, our CEP program looks better this month. So our total meals fed went down around 8,500. Also, that doesn't include Also, though, that doesn't include the three days we were out. We had Labor Day and then two days for the hurricane, so all in all, I think it was around a hundred and eighty meals a day down. But as you can tell, we collect, Miss Singleton had purchased a lot of food in August and was stored up, so our expenses are actually down, and we are now in the green for the year at roughly eight grand.
Anybody have any questions about the financials or about the CEP food service update?
Did we lose any food with the power outage? I guess you're going to get to that later in here.
No, sir. The power actually came back on late Saturday night. The generators had their freezers and refrigerators running.
What does, we have generators feeding, other than the IT? What else did it feed?
The high school, high school, middle school.
The whole school?
Uh, elec- um, emergency units and the freezers and refrigerators. Emergency lights. Refrigeration.
Okay.
All that's running on the generator.
On the generator.
Well, that's good. So that's great.
Yep, didn't lose any, any food, no waste.
Very good. Any other questions?
Was there something on here about them? You going to talk about the football thing?
Yes.
Okay, alright, I saw something.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a non-resident enrollment request.
Alright, in front of you, you have a request from the high school. This particular student is a current student at the high school, but he is actually moving to Washington, Georgia, and Dr. Woski has signed off. I request that this student still be allowed to attend Lincoln County High School.
Any questions about the student? If not, I will take a motion to approve the student.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion, my Mr. Hyman, second one, Mr. Margrave, all in favor. Thank you. We have our policies for review.
I was telling the leadership team that it's ironic that this policy came out right after the hurricane, because this policy deals with the number of days that you can miss in the school system. So if you look at page two, the board may elect not to make up the days that we miss for school, up to four days. We are a strategic waiver system. This board signed that back in Ju- June. So we waive this pop- this state policy. So it is up to this board to select how many days we, we can make up, but we don't have to make up any of those days. So this policy is correct as written.
Next is our superintendent's report.
Okay. Just want to give you an update on Hurricane Helene and our students in our schools. Just a quick, brief update. So we just mentioned that the power came back on late Saturday night. The storm hit that Friday, and we had power that Saturday night. We sent out an all-call to, to start schools back that Wednesday. Since the school was, um, had power, had internet, I actually wanted the kids to come back and staff as soon as possible. Well, we met with our EMA director and our transportation directors, and we went out to some of the areas, and they were hard-hit. So just because the school was fine, we just had some communities that was in bad shape. So then we sent out another message that we would extend school closures through October the fourth, that Friday. So schools did reopen Monday. We had approximately thirty-five absences that were related to Hurricane Helene across the district. On day two today, that number was cut in half. So our kids are back in school, and we are going to work with those parents and students who are still without power and absences. We won't hold that against them. We really want to thank the linemen, Georgia Power Rail, all the volunteers, all of the local state leaders, national leaders, all of those who helped Lincoln County in this, in this tragedy. We want to thank, thank our school administrators for all that they did. They sent emails, they called their students, they called the teachers, and make sure we're on the same page. All the school staff, board members, we want to thank you for all that you do for us. Businesses, parents, all, just thank everyone for coming together in this situation. So we just really appreciate everyone. Title I, the annual Title I night, it was scheduled for October the first. We moved that to October the twenty-first, and that is a night where parents can come in and truly understand the Title I program and how, as parents, they can learn their rights as a Title I parent in a, in a Title I school. And this is a requirement of ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, and we must have this meeting every single year. Before that meeting on October the twenty-first, at five-thirty, we're going to have a town hall school safety meeting. Several districts have done this, and there are a lot of questions about it. This really was in response to what happened at Appalachia High School on September the fourth. But what we want to do is make sure we let parents know that our job as, as leaders is first and foremost to make sure our kids are safe. And that's first and, first and foremost in our mind. We meet monthly as an, as a, as a school leadership team, and we discuss safety at every meeting. We bring in, now we're bringing in local law enforcement, so we're making sure that they give us all the information that they get in their training so that we have that same training. And we just want to make sure we have the latest technology, the latest skill sets, the understanding, and the right people at the right places in case this happens to us. So we want to make sure parents, if they, if you, if they do come out, have an understanding of where we are as a district. And of course, we're not going to share the school safety plan with them. We're not going, there are some things we cannot share with them, but we want to be able to share what we can share with them so that they know that their child is safe when they're in our schools. Alright, stadium rules. For the last couple of years, and we've, we've just had some, some increased injuries with, with little ones running around, being misbehaving, and some physical aggression. So we met with Dr. Woski, and we wanted to update our rules and ensure safety for our fans. So we've had some unwritten rules before, but now we want to put them on paper, say, and then be able to give this to law enforcement so they can help us enforce these rules. And again, some, some parents may not like it, but it's for the safety of all our spectators at these events. Any questions on the rules, and Mr. Hyman, you?
I would, I was just going to ask about the concession stands, how well they're working. When I've been there, they seem to be working much better than it used to be. Is it, is it?
Yes, sir. Dr. Woski, if you had?
Yeah, it's so much better, easier access in and out. It's clearer than that walkway out, especially on the home side. It's much better.
I can, I can tell you that y'all need to look at the home side, where that, it, the, it, the, um, window closest to the entrance on the home side. You know, when you drop off that concrete, I've seen lots of people trip, so anyway, might all look at that. But other than that, it's, it seems to be really nice, big upgrade. But I didn't know if you had any good feedback, or if you had nothing but good feedback about it, I guess.
Yes, especially from the bamboo service numbers.
Yeah, it seems to be a lot nicer.
I just had a couple of questions. Uh, no re-entry.
Yes, sir.
Is that just applying to students? Is that applying to adults?
Adults, students, everyone involved.
Okay, so there won't be any re-entry for no reason whatsoever, then?
Except for the, the, when you go put your seats down, you want to connect for the walk, and then the tailgate, that's provided.
Six fifteen, they go put their seats down like they normally do, but once the game starts and they come in, they're in. They leave, they're not, they'll be allowed back in.
Okay, well, that should buy another ticket.
Right.
Yeah, that should buy another ticket. And then also, the, I noticed the thing about the, the poppers and noise makers and that kind of thing. Oh, you get the cowbells and jugs with rocks and all that stuff is eliminated, I'm assuming?
No, sir, that's partly from the GHSA. You can't have air horns, I forget, whistles. Those are the two main things.
So it's not necessarily applying to the, some of the stuff that the students have now?
Yes, sir.
I got you, okay. I understand the footballs, basketballs, I'm sure all that's what they're playing with.
Especially those footballs, yes, sir.
Yeah, and the ends on it.
Lot of injuries.
Right, yeah, okay. Any other questions about the stadium rules?
So they're not, the, the students can't pop that blue stuff and all that?
No, the, they're, they're not supposed to have the powder anyway. If they do, if they do the popper with the confetti, they have to stay open.
Any other question?
I, I have one question.
Okay.
Dr. Gumby, I realize this policy gives us board authority not to make up these days. Will the administration make a recommendation whether we should?
Yes, we actually met with leadership, well, the cabinet, Mr. Williams and Dr. Cunningham. We've discussed that we have a principal leadership meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Just to kind of talk about with the missed days, how we're going to make them up, what, what are we going to do different? And so that discussion is tomorrow.
Okay.
Head start. Head start. So we have not started head start yet. CDI is the interim company that is providing oversight for the program in Lincoln County. As you guys know, CSRA, EOA had the program for twenty, thirty years, and they are now, they did not receive the grants this year. So I've been meeting with CDI, and we've come to an agreement. They are going to reduce the number of personnel from last year. They're going to reduce the number of classrooms from six last year to just two. The rent, we did go up on the rent from six hundred to a thousand dollars per month. They do not want district transportation, so their parents will have to bring them to school, but they will reimburse us for the breakfast, snacks, and lunch meals for their children. So we're hoping that we can start within the next two weeks. We're just waiting on a signed contract. Dr. Goldman, anything about head start, they need to get them in as soon as we can?
Early intervention is definitely the best. We noticed a difference with the students who, we had head start many years ago, and it was on the trail around the playground, and it went away for several years, and then started back up at the old campus for the past two years with CSRA, EOA. And the students that attend head start were more prepared to come into pre-k in a school routine, understanding, you know, having a foundation. One of the biggest things that Dr. Gundy and I speak about is, in our rural county, we don't have a lot of preschools. We have several home daycare providers, but daycare definitely is a struggle for the majority of parents, or at least coordinating what that's going to look like. And any opportunity that we can have to bring more service to our students earlier. It also helps identify students who need support before they go to pre-k, so that helps get them special ed services if they need that before they get to pre-k. So that's all.
I want to have a note on the hurricane update. Notice Jeff Miller and a lot of the maintenance guys doing a lot of work, so they did most, the majority of everything, and saved us from having to get a company to take the trees and stuff down.
He did majority of the work, but we did contract with the company who does our lawn care. And they, yes, Fox, to move some of the bigger pieces of timber.
Okay. Alright, there's no other questions. I need a motion to go to executive session.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, my Mr. Margrave, second one, Mr. Madison. I'd like to call this October meeting back to order. The superintendent's recommended, and I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Michelle Andrew as a food service worker effective immediately. Second, my Mr. Madison, all in favor. Superintendent's recommended, and I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Angie Spratlin as a bookkeeper for the Lincoln County Elementary School effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Second, my Mr. Madison, all in favor. Thank you, and I need a motion to adjourn. That's Hyman. Thank you.